Good. All right. Candy, you can let me know when you're ready. You lit up, but I didn't hear you. All right. All right, Candy, are you ready? I'm not hearing you, Candy. Ben, can you guys hear us?
Room audio isn't picking us up.
All right. He'll figure it out. It was working at the last meeting, so he'll figure it out. All right. Can we hear Jean? Yeah, we're not hearing the Zoom folks. Yeah, Spencer's back there.
Poor Dave. He had like burns in his, powder burns on his hand.
You've been working too hard on the computer. It's revolting.
It was. People on Zoom could hear, see the, the, the smoke.
Can you guys on the Zoom call talk really quick again?
No. She just said something had to work. Oh, Joy. Dave, are you having your luck here now, too?
Oh, at least nothing's on fire.
It's working fine now, but the IT gave me a new power cord.
Okay, but, but the Zoom people can't hear us now, so you're a magic touch now.
It, it was working during finance. I don't know what happened in the 12-minute break.
Yeah, it just kept going.
That's true.
Could be.
All right, can you try talking one more time?
Testing, testing.
Can you guys hear me?
Success. All right. All right, let me know when you're ready, Candy.
Okay, I'm all set.
Okay, we'll try again. Welcome. It's Tuesday, June 13th of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council, and we'll start out with the roll call.
Okay, Caravallo.
Here.
Hiley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Chumacher.
Here.
Peyton.
Here.
We have nine Alders present. We have Vanegas and Sir Lucky, absent and excused.
All right, thank you. We are certified of compliance with the open meeting laws. We did not have anybody signed up for public comment. And I don't have anything under communications or presentations. Do we have any communications from Alders?
Yes.
Okay, Alder Person Lagaki, and I guess I know what you're gonna talk about, so I'm gonna throw some graphics up here, and when you start speaking, I'll click on the correct one. How's that sound?
Pretty cool. Juneteenth. There it is. Please be there if you can be there. Many thanks to the city for providing some funding to help it move forward at this time.
All right, anything else you want to add, or does it say it all?
Way to go. I think it says it all. It's happening there, and look at the art. Fabulous.
Yeah, I'm not really sure who did that, but it looks awesome.
No, it, Brandy S.
Brandy S. I don't know Brandy S.
She's a high school student.
Yep, one of the kids of, of some of the organizers.
Awesome.
I have a question for Jean. Are there, since I, I don't think I've seen any promotional stuff for these, like flyers or posters or anything, are they out there? Are they available?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I can get that to you. I can also make Sharon and Sarah, who are the people I mostly dealt with, available. This is a nice group of folks. And I think that they're working on many of those aspects. I've been following on, on the email trail, but fill all that email when I get an answer.
Thank you.
I can say that I've seen them in town. I went to Tabby and Jack's the other day, and it was there. So there are some flyers out there. They may not be like public posted, but they were handout flyers. So they're out there.
If I could get a flyer or two, I, I know of some places that would like to have flyers or posters for this event.
I know where you can get some.
Well, the mayor has all the answers. There we go.
Yes, I'll print some out. I printed some out for them. They handed some out at the farmer's market. It's been posted on our social media, and I believe they're going to be around at Tieste Stoughton, which is the day before. So that's another event that's coming up this weekend. So if you're looking for something to do, we have things to do Saturday and Sunday.
That's a cool logo.
Yeah. Any other communications?
Hopefully so.
Alder Reeves.
Well, I just wondered if you were gonna click on, share the info, the slide since you're at it about the resettlement.
I will.
Family picnic. And I, I received it, and I offered to volunteer, but I was at a personnel meeting, so I missed the info, so I don't know much more than what's on the flyer, but that's also an opportunity to meet some different people in the city and that is coming up on the 24th.
Yeah, it's down in the fine print.
Yeah, 10 to 2, it looks like.
And then we also have our diversity, equity, and inclusion planning meeting on June 21st at the fire station at 6 o'clock. And then a couple other things I'll put on there. Catfish River Fest lineup has been announced, and that is June 30th, July 1st and 2nd. And then the weekend after that is the Stoughton Junior Fair, and there'll be fireworks, hopefully on the first night of the fair, weather permitting. If not, it'll be the last night of the fair, weather permitting. And then we also have a fundraiser coming up in July for Odin the Kine, so if you're interested in getting photos done, you can do that as well. So there's quite a few things going on. That's what I had for communications. Anybody else? All right, well, we'll get back to the agenda here. And the next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda, and there's multiple items on there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen and a second by Mieski. Would anybody like anything acted on separately?
I just have a correction on the council minutes.
Okay. Turn on your mics so Candy can hear you.
Oh, the, on the council minutes, there is a typo where it says President Hirsch tanked the, the, the Chamber of Commerce. I think I meant thanked. And so if we can make that, you know, it seems how this is a public record. I'd like it to be shown that I actually thanked everybody, not tanked them.
Like duck tank?
My apologies. I noted the correction.
All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any, any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. First item then for ordinances, we have multiple second readings tonight. So the first one is ordinance 15 to 2023, and this one came from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravallo, can you introduce this one?
Certainly. Thank you. This is ordinance 15 of 2023. A plan development, general development plan for 2605 Cromwell Court, Lot 27. And a, or parentheses, Lot 27, parentheses, and a portion of 2500 Jackson Street, parentheses, Lot 15, Kettle Park West, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Peyton. Alder Person Caravallo.
And this is just a request to create a plan development, general development plan for multifamily residential at this site. And I, I guess I'll make my comment since there is, and people will probably ask that a, a member of Plan Commission voted against, and I just, this again, as we discussed at last council meeting. I was just kind of, I guess I'm uncomfortable with the ingress egress to this site for this development.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Sheal, or if you want to put something up on the screen, feel free to do that. Connor's in the room, if you'd like to have him speak to some things.
Yeah, Connor's available to answer questions, and so am I. Subsequent to this, there is an actionable item under new business related to the combination of these two portions of properties into one parcel. They're, they're conditioned upon one another. If this zoning goes through, then, then the CSM would be available to act on as well. This is a proposal to create a multifamily development utilizing the plan development process. You've seen a general presentation by staff as well as the, the development community over the last couple of months. And if there's any questions, we'd certainly be trying to answer them for you, myself and/or Connor.
All right. Anything you want to mention, Connor, while you're here? I know you did some follow-up to some of the questions that were had, and you just have to push, so the red button, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the, the time. And I hope you all had the chance to review the, the memo that we sent. I guess I feel like I didn't answer some of the questions adequately, or I left the room, you know, kind of kicking myself, not, not like, I guess presenting in the best way. So we just wanted to follow up on the items, being a kind of a financial overview of the project, the impact to the TID district and project sustainability. As far as the financial overview, we think that we're, we're hitting, as we, we showed in the, the chart, that we're hitting the, the market rents within Stoughton currently. We're, we're on the upper end of it, but with the project not coming in line until 2024, we, we feel like we're, we're at existing market for, for the, the rental units. As far as an impact to the TID district, right now it's showing, based on the current assessed value of other multifamily projects within Stoughton, it's showing a $2.6 million value greater than the, the Lot 27 and Convention Center, partially due to the greater multifamily density, and then multifamily tending to have a higher appraised value compared to the hospitality of the Convention Center. And also with the low vacancy rate of less than 3.5%, we think that that shows a demand that would help it perform well. And then for sustainable practices, I missed one of the biggest one, which is pace financing. We typically use that on a lot of our projects, and that means that you need to use a certain amount of energy-efficient products, and the, the total of those allows you to apply for pace financing. And even if we don't apply for it on day one, if you install those improvements at a later date, you can then apply for it. So it's likely something that we'll try to utilize. But then we're also looking at other things such as electric vehicles and solar panels and things like that, partially due to the, the, the group here kind of advocating for it. So it's always a good reminder, even if times are difficult with high construction costs, that we always push for those things. So with that, would take any other questions that you might have?
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Connor?
Not actually for Connor, and this is kind of jumping ahead to the resolution, but since they're tied together, I would just be interested in any additional comments that Alder Person Caravallo or Alder Person Mieski have, because it looks like they both voted no, so any additional info you might want to share?
Make sure you push the button.
My, you know, my concerns are, are the same as Phil's, traffic. That amount of traffic going through a cul-de-sac into a residential area, I find that problematic as far as the fact that I'm not a fan of the, the planned development zoning we have now. I consider it kind of the Wild West of, of zoning. You know, you look at this original proposal, and there was nothing but exceptions to it that were requested. They're fitting excuses that, way to put this, but they're putting, trying to put 10 pounds into a five-pound bag in that lot. You look at the lot, it is nothing but impervious surface. You got, you know, a couple of small green spaces, and that's about it. It's, it, it's just not a good fit.
All right, any other questions?
I don't have any questions or comments.
Oh, go ahead.
I mean, I'm looking at this, and I guess at this point, I will be voting no as well. And it comes for a number of reasons. First, when KPW came on, the community had a referendum. They really didn't want this development. And even though when I was elected, I couldn't do anything about the development going forward, but I did make a promise to myself and to the council that I would do everything that I could to make sure that this development is the best it could be with what we had. And I don't think this is the best, and there's many reasons. One, there's too many of these flexibilities. Again, like Elder Mieski was saying, too much impervious surface. The landscaping is almost half of what we recommend, the setbacks are half. There's, it, it's just, the list goes on, and it just, so that's one of the things. The second is, it's like it's tucked back away from the rest of the development. We had talked about making our developments feel inclusive, that we have single-family homes, multifamily homes, and that they would all be part of a community. This makes it feel like the people that can't afford a house are shoved off in a corner, they're kind of blocked off from the rest of the thing, and it doesn't feel inclusive. It feels like an afterthought. One, you have to enter through a cul-de-sac. I mean, it just is not thing. It's just, even though, and the last thing is, I appreciate all the things that you're talking about, sustainability issues, but you talk, in your proposal, you say, we, you know, we'll look into it. If you came in with saying, this is actually what we're gonna do, when you say, we're gonna look into it, there is no commitment. As soon as we sign this, that goes out the door. And so unless you come in with and say, this is exactly what we're going to do, I, I can't support this. It's just not the right fit. You know, you, you know, I think you guys can do a lot better and make the site a lot better. And that wasn't even on. So hopefully people.
It was on, I think they probably heard you. So I guess my question would be, what, what could they do to make it better?
Not on Plan Commission, but it would have to open up. I mean, the other part of the development isn't there. I mean, one, get rid of the cul-de-sac. Two, you know, have it a regular road that is more open. Three, you don't have the minimum landscaping reduced, the setbacks reduced. Look at all that. I mean, even the buildings themselves are not unique and inviting. They're, I mean, if you look at some of the other cool apartment buildings going up, this is on the lower end, and it, it makes it feel like a lower end, and therefore, let's tuck it away so nobody can see it. And that's, that's, so come back with something exciting. I mean, back there, if you want to have it exclusive, have some, you know, big estates that have big lots, that have big houses or something like that, that then they have this kind of privacy to them, but they're, but they're not. It's inclusive, but, you know, I, I just don't like, people that can't afford things to be stuck in a corner. I mean, I want it to be an inclusive feel to our community.
All right, any other comments or any questions from Alders? Alder Person Peyton?
Just a quick question. I, so I've heard now with this lot, one, the Convention Center originally, and then now multifamily homes. But what was, are there any other opportunity, or are there other directions that were considered to take within these lots, and, and what were they?
Yeah, I think the, the main one that would have been considered, and I guess at some point, I'd like to address some of the comments as well, but other commercial opportunities, we, we had looked at both as a condo. So the rear half of Lot 15 would become a condo, leaving the MR10 on the other lot. And it's, without connecting to the cul-de-sac, that becomes more isolated behind Lot 15. By combining the two, it improves the ability to, to do multifamily. And, but at the same time, from a commercial standpoint, if that were one lot, you wouldn't want the commercial to come through Cromwell necessarily, because then you're going through the residential development to get to it. So it doesn't become the best commercial lot. So one of the better alternatives was creating a condo on the back half of Lot 15, looking for other commercial uses. But we kind of marketed that and didn't find much of an opportunity there, being behind a hotel like that. So the best thing we could do was create a single multifamily, create a, the, the connection, which works from an engineering standpoint, to Cromwell. And then now with a fire lane, we have the opportunity to create pedestrian connections through the hotel site and connect to the commercial. So I think location-wise, it's actually really good for commercial and the multifamily, because you can, you can walk to the commercial center pretty easily through the hotel site. So in a way, it does feel tucked back from the, the drive, but it is more connected from a pedestrian standpoint.
So no matter how we slice it, the market evaluation was really, living spaces need to be considered within this, these two lots for it to be most effective and efficient?
Living spaces or commercial were the, the ones that we vetted in multifamily. Living spaces is the one that, that made the, the most sense for that location, we felt. And then, sorry, I, I guess.
No, that's okay. It, it, I, I agree with Alder Person Hirsch is that it's, it's a, it's just such an odd lot, considering what's surrounding it. Like Aldi is the hotel, the other very high commercial warehouses, and I'm not sure what all other businesses are behind those lots either, or what's around it. So it's, it's odd to, it is an odd feeling when you drive in there and try to drive through for multifamily homes, when on the other side of it are single-family new development homes. Not that they can't be in the same area, because they are in many different developments across the city, but just that, it does feel like it's trying to nestle it into something that, like a square and a circle hole. It's difficult, but I understand where you're coming from for.
Yeah, and one, one thing to, to mention too, kind of along that, we had looked at doing along the alley lots, which is shown in purple on this graphic. The purple at the top-left corner near the yellow single families, that's the alley-loaded home lots. The original Meadows plan had about 300 multifamily units along that location, which was viewed at the time of being too, too dense, I, I believe too dense for the area. Parkland was also an issue. It, it consumed most of the rest of the site if that was the case. So the, the Cromwell Court location was viewed as the best location for that multifamily. So it's, it's a little bit of trying to find a balance there, because that was too many units, too front and center. We don't want it to feel tucked away, so that is probably, as we go into site design, something that we need to improve upon is, how can we make this feel welcoming upon entry? But, you know, we, we had looked at it in other locations within the Meadows, and Cromwell Court is kind of where, where it ended, ended up being. And I guess the other piece, you had mentioned Aldi's. I, I think from a multifamily standpoint, I, I remember living in an apartment in, near Hilldale in Madison. Well, although it was a detriment in the sense that I never could make a decent grocery list, but I could walk to a grocery store. So I was always doing that. So it's, it's an extreme amenity. And then from the, 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 the other commercial, you know, looking at the parking lots or the, the car dealerships, not as ideal as in Aldi's, but things always change over time, so.
Any other questions or comments from Alders? Alder Person Reeves?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure I have anything new, but I really just struggled with this. Because I understand sometimes you need to pivot, you know, as, as a business, but the exemptions, you know, it's sort of like, oops, you know, our projections were, are different now, and so we, again, you know, sort of feels like the square peg in the round hole. I just feel like there's gonna be a lot of traffic back there, and I don't want to regret that. And aesthetically, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So I, based on the way it looks right now, I just, I don't think I could support it. I feel like it still needs, I just don't want to regret putting a lot of, you know, multifamily back there that feels like we've just made a lot of exceptions that, that just don't even feel right, you know? So that's kind of where I'm at with it. It just doesn't seem like it's quite a good setup for that spot at this juncture for me.
All right. Anybody online have any questions or comments, Ben or Jean? All right, hearing none. Anybody else in the room? Last chance.
Can I kind of close up, I guess?
Sure.
Um, I, I just wanted to go back, back to, to two main things. The, the access seems to be one of the big ones that keeps coming up, and the, it doesn't feel right. We commissioned a traffic study to prove that it, that it works. So I'd like us to kind of lean on numbers to the greatest extent possible. Maybe a traffic study could be commissioned by the city or something to, to verify that. But KL Engineer, Engineers is a reputable company. They believe that this is low where you're gonna see one car a minute at peak hours. And what that doesn't take into account too, and this is more anecdotal, but, you know, people work from home now, so that's peak hours before people worked from home. So kind of try to lean on the numbers a little bit. If, you know, if we were asked to do a traffic study, traffic study says it works. So I think it's somewhat, if we don't have evidence to the opposite, difficult to refute that. And then the, the exemptions and flexibility. I, I guess the, the PD process from a development standpoint is one of the best tools that I think we have. If we stick with conventional zoning, it means that zoning is constantly having to rewrite rules, because things are always changing. Two years from now, there'll be small things that are different that we need to adjust to. So it's a great tool that we have, and, and we're really trying to minimize, minimize the, the exceptions being, you know, there's currently, I think, four or five, 12 dwelling units per building. That, that's very typical. that's very typical across town, as well as multiple buildings. And then, for the impervious area seems to, is coming up again as well. Right now, we're currently above, have a higher landscape ratio than what would have been there. Granted, the uses are different, but we have the ability with our current stormwater capacity to meet it. And I think we need to, as I mentioned in the memo, talking about different landscape elements we're trying to incorporate. The surface parking is one of the things that is making this achievable market rates, without financial assistance. If we decrease impervious area by doing increased garages or something like that, that will likely negatively impact the affordability of these. So, we're trying to find a balance between these two, those things. So, thanks for giving me a couple extra minutes to-
Sure.
Just recap on a couple of those points.
All right. Thank you for that. Alder Person Mieski?
Want to comment on, on your last comments. You confuse us with being developers. We're not. We don't lean on the numbers. Our job is not to try to squeeze out as much money as we possibly can, or work things out as an engineering type of a situation. Our job is to get the best product we possibly can get, and the highest quality product we can possibly get for this community. I'm not seeing that here. That's plain and simple. So, not going to lean on numbers, not going to, you know, because it works. A lot of things work in the world. Engineering-wise, you can get anything to work. Aesthetically, not going to be that great. Quality-wise, yeah, it'll work. Won't be the best. That's not my job. My job is to get, maximize the quality for this community. And I'm not seeing that with this. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. So, we do have a motion on the floor. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
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 Okay. So, that motion does fail. Thanks for being here. And then, you know, I heard one aye. Is that what you had, Candy?
Yes, I had one.
Okay. All right. So, we had, 108 is what I had. The next item we'll go to is Ordinance 16, and that one also comes from Plan Commission from second reading.
Yes, thank you. This is Ordinance 16 of 2023, and Ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands within the Magnolia Springs development, and I so-
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher. Alder Person Caravelo?
And just as it says, request to rezone properties within the, the development from rural holding to single-family.
All right. Anything you want to add on this one, Director Shield?
This illustration of the exhibit that's on your screen, the zoning ordinance you're acting on now is related to the SR6 sites and SR5 sites. The subsequent ordinance on the next agenda item is related to the PD sites. And I can certainly speak to the difference between the two, but I think this illustration helps to show the setback distances and the comparison between the PD areas and the SR6 and 5 lots being, matching one another in the, in the GDP that's proposed for the next ordinance as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance 17 is the ordinance related to the general development plan. Alder Person Caravelo?
And this one is Ordinance 17 of 2023, approving a plan development, general development plan for the Magnolia Springs subdivision, and I so move.
Is there a second? Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Caravelo?
And I think I'm just going to let Rodney fill us in with more information, or if there's any questions?
Yeah, I just highlighted, but the items that are being requested for the rezoning in the PD district are illustrated here. The building envelopes are shown. It shows the relationship of those building envelopes to the adjacent SR5 and SR6 lots to match those setback distances. These are twin homes and/or zero-outline structures that could be sold off as separate owners in each of these duplex facilities.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is Ordinance 18 of 2023. This one comes from Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 18, 2023, amending Ordinance Chapter 70-135, Parent B, by creating subsection C, Senior Center Parking Only, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Stalls to be designated in the area of north side of the Senior Center, and I move for approval.
Second by Peyton. All right. Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, it's simply to, it was a request by Cindy, and it's, it would be the parking on the north side of the alley that goes down behind public, north side of the alley that goes down behind the Senior Center, and on the ramp too, behind the Senior Center in view.
So, basically, all parking on the north side?
Yeah.
Of property?
Yeah. You have a question?
All right. I'm just going to put it up on the screen quick here.
Okay.
All right. So, it's the two right around the Senior Center.
Yep.
It's, it's not the one back by the river.
It's right. The one along the river, we felt that that would, we should keep that open for, because it's on the river, and there's actually a park right there. So, we left that open for public.
So, does that diagram make a change?
Yeah, the diagram is actually incorrect, but it'll only be the two that are circled that are just north of the Senior Center.
So, 1, 2, and 3?
Yes.
Correct.
So, would that be reflected somewhere?
I think it is in the resolution.
We corrected that the last time, didn't we?
Yeah. Yep.
I think the picture is just inaccurate.
Yeah. We can, but it won't really be posted anywhere.
Okay.
But we can. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next one is Ordinance 19, comes from Public Safety. Alder Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's Ordinance 19, 2023, amending Chapter 70-322, decreasing state speed limit on certain streets to include racetrack road, and I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Legaki. Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, this is, was brought to us, I believe it was, in conjunction with the township, try to, to, well, increase the public safety.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one?
Just a question. Alder Jensen, do you remember there was one person who voted against it? Do you know, did they have a concern about too fast, too slow, or?
That would have been Tricia, and quite frankly, I do not recall what her, what her reason was.
Alder Jensen? I believe, I believe it was the gentleman on our committee who was a deputy, working with the, and he had just said that they hadn't had problems with the, with the speed.
Oh, you remember better than I do then. Yeah.
Yes. So, it was just his view, and I believe he's with the Sheriff's Department. Correct, right?
That sounds right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you could say, see that whenever we, we have traffic concerns, we put the speed board out, and this is some data from the speed board that we bought in the last year or two.
Yeah.
So, it kind of gives you an idea what's going on out there. But we, we move this thing around quite often, especially as we get feedback from constituents.
So, that shows that they go-
Yeah, the speed limit now is, what, 35? So, you can see, you know, the majority of people are going 35 or even less, but there are some that are speeding. You know, this lowering it hopefully will slow them down. If not, you know, enforcement would be the next, next step. And, you know, the unique thing about racetrack is, you know, we own half the road, and the township owns the other half. So-
Yeah, and also, there's, well, it's mostly residential along there, with exception of where the racetrack park is. And the park has a lot of activity there, so it just makes sense to lower the speed limit.
Yeah, we anticipate redoing that road will be in our five-year CIP. Not really sure if we've specified a year, but we've had some internal conversations about coming up with some strategies on the road itself to try to put in some, you know, measures of slowing people down. So, that'll be something that, when we get to that item and we're in the design and engineering phase, we'll take a look at, as another way to slow down traffic.
So, you said we own half, and Dunkirk owns half?
Yeah.
Are we working with Dunkirk to make sure that they match our speed limit, and we reached out to them?
Well, they, they made the request, so what we would do is communicate to them. As far as actually putting the signs up, Rodney, do you know how that works? Because I don't. I mean, I don't-
So, we actually, we actually share the border, not 50/50 on the entire stretch, but I think we have the ability to regulate the speed limit. Our officers can regulate the speed limit, as posted as 25, even if it's just outside the city limits, I believe. And I do know that the town is interested in collaborating with the city on both the ability to maintain slower speeds. Just posting the speed limit may not be completely effective, but it's a, that's a step in the, the direction of their request.
Thank you, Rodney.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is also from Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen?
And/or no motor truck, tractor, trailer, semi-trailer, or cabin trailer used in connection therewith, and with an overall length of 17 feet or more, and I'd move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Peyton. Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, this is, no, let's see. This is on the west side of Progressive Way, between Glacier Marine Drive and Business Park Circle, and on the west side of Commerce Road. So, this is out in the industrial, or industrial park north, and it's obviously to limit the backlog, or, I don't know, backlog's not the right word, to eliminate the parking, overnight parking that has been happening out there. I wish the chief was here. He had some, he had some comments on it that I, I-
Aren't they also just parking their trailers there?
Yeah, there's, there's-
Like storage?
Parking of trailers that bend up being storage, exactly. And this should take care of that.
Yeah, and as well as, we had a request for parking for the trail access as well.
Yeah. I believe some, wasn't there also something from Public Works as far as plowing and-
There usually is.
Yeah.
Definitely. So, I think the signage is already out there, but we wanted to make sure that we could get it approved, and we didn't actually have an ordinance that was specific to this type of parking. So, that's why it's lagging.
I think there's a typo. I think it's Progress Lane instead of Progress Way, minor thing, but I think that would be changed to Progress Lane.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one?
No.
President Hirsch?
I just want to comment that the last time we discussed this, Chief Jenks was here, and I asked him what the sign would actually say, because it's very, and he did send me a mock-up of the sign. It says, "No overnight and/or truck parking." So, it's very simple. So, it doesn't have multiple words on it like I was expecting.
All right.
So, thank you, Chief. Less is more. And thank you, Chief Jenks, for sending me the photo.
Oh, yeah, there it is. All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next one is the certified survey map for Cromwell Court. This one had gone through the Plan Commission as well. Alder Person Caravelo?
Yep. This one is R92 of 2023, a certified survey map to combine the properties at 2605 Cromwell Court and 2500 Jackson Street, which is the rear portion of Lot 15, Kettle Park West, and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by President Hirsch. So, I guess I would ask Rodney, or even the applicant, would we still go forward with the certified survey map, or would, would that be withdrawn? Or what happens here, Rodney?
If it isn't withdrawn, I'd recommend that it, it'll minimum be tabled or declined. The fact that the zoning would, would not be by parcel lines, it was bisects parcel, I don't think would be appropriate to have it combined.
Okay. Connor, did you have a preference if we tabled it, or if we, I mean, you could always bring it back, but what are you thinking?
Yeah, I either think tabling, there's two thoughts. Having a separate parcel can help the hotel as well, which is a piece of this, is that having a saleable parcel, and then the back half of Lot 15 makes the hotel perform better. So, if we're able to approve it, that creates a saleable parcel. How we apply the zoning, as Director Shield mentioned, becomes an issue. But we always have the opportunity to not record it. So, I would either say tabling, or acting on the land division might give us the opportunity to still sell that piece, which would be helpful for, for the true hotel.
All right. Any thoughts on that, Rodney?
Yeah, it'd be my recommendation to table it until the zoning can be applied to the rear portion of Lot 15 that's acceptable to the city, whether that's added to the MR10 zoning classification, or some other, but I think we need to have a uniform zoning across the newly created parcel here.
Mayor, if I could just add one comment?
Sure.
So, the CSM, you do have sort of a shot clock to approve it. So, you can extend the shot clock if it's, if there's agreement between the city and the applicant. But otherwise, if you table it without the agreement, then after 30 days, it's deemed approved.
Okay. Not to complicate matters, huh? No, thanks for, thank you for that. So, based on that, what, what do you think we should do?
Unless the developer has the authority to request an extension, or authorize an extension, I think then we'd have to move to deny.
When is the, when is the next meeting, or I guess, if the next meeting is, what is it, the second week of August, or the next meeting in July, we'd still have the opportunity to turn it down at that point, right?
June 27th, but I don't know when the clock started ticking on this one.
Yeah, so it would have been 30 days from the Plan Commission recommendation.
Which was? Which was?
Ha, it's approved, no.
Well, I don't think that we could be able, we should be able to, um, we wouldn't be able to resolve a rezoning request or even act on a rezoning request for the back half of Lot fifteen prior to that time. I'm troubled by the fact that we'd have zoning applicable to two different portions of a, of one parcel as it currently would stand.
Any thoughts, Attorney Matthew, what, what we should do on this one, then?
Um, well, I don't know if Connor can speak for the developer to, you know, get.
I thought of one thing, but I'll let you go first.
Yeah, I mean, it, cause otherwise, like if you're, we have oral agreement here, we could, you know, just.
Make a contingent on something or?
Right, like, um, yeah, he could agree here, just say like, we'll agree to a timeline of like thirty days or something to reconsider it.
Yeah.
And bring it back. Um, uh, otherwise, if you have other suggestions.
My only other thought was, I, I don't think that MR-ten would be realistic, but if, if we were able to do like MR-24, which alleviates concerns about the, um, all the, the PD-related items. That could be a, something that we could look at. And then we'd go through an SIP process, so the GDP, we'd just be stripped of several other requirements. I don't know if it, I, I doubt that in our current form, we'd have to look at how we could accommodate that within conventional, if that even works. But that, that's, that could be another option. I don't know if we're able to agree to that now necessarily, but otherwise, I think a timetable agreement could make sense.
Yeah, I mean, we could set it out thirty, sixty days just to bring it back after we've had a chance to review it.
So just thinking, would we have to take it back through the Plan Commission first, Rodney, you think, or would it come right back?
We'd need to have a rezoning request from the applicant. And if they're proposing to go to MR-24, we'd have to have such a request. Right now, we don't have a pending request for rezoning. MR-ten exists on the Lot twenty-seven and the rear half of Lot fifteen still has the, um, the, the associated zoning with the convention center. So I think we'd have to have a new rezoning request, uh, that would encompass both, both areas.
So if we were to decline it and have to start all over with the CSM request, is that a huge undertaking?
May, maybe we could, uh, maybe we could say this, uh, we would waive the, the resubmital of a CSM fee for this if it comes back with a rezoning request. Cause there is an application and a fee related to rezoning request or, or a CSM. I think we could be in a position to waive the application fee for a, a renewed CSM request that accompanies a rezoning request.
Okay, does that sound palatable?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, the geometry doesn't change, it's only the, the zoning, so I think that makes sense. And if we have to go back through Plan Commission to get zoning, it, it seems like this is currently a, kind of a moot, moot point.
Okay, Alder Person Reeves?
Well, just a clarification from, um, Director Shield. So it sounds like for consistency, the cleanest thing, so we're not setting a, an odd sort of precedent for this, you know, for future things that may happen like this. Is the cleanest thing to deny it as written?
I, I believe that's true. I think it would be appropriate if, if there's support for my idea of waiving the, the CSM application fee if they resubmit it along with the revised rezoning request.
Good, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any thoughts or want to make a motion to that effect? Alder Person Mieski.
Future, future survey, certified survey map?
Second.
All right, it's a second by President Hirsch. Did you catch all that candy?
Not well.
Not very well at all.
All right, so I think it, the, the intent of it is to deny it with the understanding that, um, a future certified survey map request, we would waive the fees. Now, I don't know if we put a date on when that request could be. You know, it can't be a forever request, but a reasonable time period.
I think the thirty, the thirty to sixty day window could make sense, sixty days.
All right, is sixty days work for you guys? Okay. All right, so we would waive the fees for up to sixty days, um, as part of the motion. Does that make sense, Candy?
Yes, I got that. Who made the motion?
Uh, Alder Mieski, and it was seconded by President Hirsch.
Thank you.
All right, did everybody understand the motion? All right, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Um, item number thirteen is from Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
You have to listen to me for a, a number in a row here, so. Uh, this is R-93, 2023, Resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, Approving Agreement to Undertake Development of Magnolia Springs. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, this is the developer's agreement for the Magnolia Springs development that we were talking about in the previous, uh, ordinances from earlier.
All right, anything you want to highlight in it? Um, Director Shield?
Yeah, I think you, you'll recognize this as being fair, fairly standard in, in our subdivision development process. Worked with the city attorney, um, parts of previous subdivision improvements agreements and the, um, master development agreements are incorporated into here. Your next item is related to Phase One, so the city attorney and I feel that we've accomplished, um, the intent of previous, um, agreements incorporated for this development in these two agreements as well.
All right. Any questions or comments from Alders on this one? And my understanding is on Magnolia Springs, they're, they're looking to, you know, get some dirt moved, do some infrastructure work. We'll see how the weather holds up here in the fall on whether or not they'll get vertical or not, but they certainly are, are poison ready to go. The, the lots that Elden, Elden Homes purchased out at, um, Nordic Ridge are almost all built. Um, they're selling as fast as they can build them, so, um, they're, they're excited about their, their next development here in Stoughton. Any questions or comments on the developer's agreement? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, continuing on, R-94 of 2023 is a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, Approving Agreement for Subdivision Improvements, Phase One and Phase One A of Magnolia Springs. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, just a continuation, uh, phasing out the, the different parts of the entire development.
All right, anything you want to add about Phase One and to Rodney?
Yeah, Phase One and Phase One A really, um, are the northern part, portions of this development. It extends public utilities necessary to serve Phase One, and it outlines the time in which Orchard Avenue has to be connected in order to facilitate the, the transportation utility connection to Fourth Street by date certain.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Item fifteen, Alder Person Schumacher.
This is R-95, 2023, A Resolution Amending the 2023 Adopted Budget for Auto License Plate Recognition Cameras. So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, something from the PD where they wanted to utilize, uh, monies left over from, uh, Bryant Foundation donation. It would then, we'd still have to transfer in about, uh, twenty-three hundred dollars-ish to, uh, complete that purchase of the cameras.
And if I could also add, that would actually lower the amount of bond proceeds that we need.
Yep, they use these cameras, especially for like stolen vehicles, there's a database if they, the, the software captured the, the license plate, it goes in a database. If that vehicle's been stolen or there's a warrant or something, it automatically alerts other, uh, other officers in the county. So they can hopefully, you know, apprehend, so that's, that's the purpose of these. And they've had some pretty good success lately with them. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of stolen cars here in Dane County. So, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Um, you're on a roll, keep going.
Got it. R-96 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ellers and Associates to modify boundaries for tax increment District Number Six, the Business Park Expansion. So moved.
Second by Alder Jensen, Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, this would, uh, extend the boundaries on TIF or TID six in the Business Park North to include the properties where Emmy Roth is currently building their project.
All right, thank you. We have Gary Becker here and, uh, we're working with Gary, has done quite a bit of work for the city in the past and we've tapped him to help out our finance director and be the project manager for amending and creating new TIFs, so Gary, you can come up. I think most of you know Gary, but maybe not everybody, and maybe you want to just give a quick overview of, of what we're doing here.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, um, Emmy Roth started construction of the headquarters, uh, building and a, uh, processing warehouse facility, uh, just north of TID six. It's in the kind of lighter orange color on the map on the screen. They, uh, so the city has been talking about amending TID number six, any way to capture that value to make improvements to Williams Drive. The, uh, Emmy Roth just submitted a TIF request for an additional facility on the very north end, a cheese manufacturing facility. That would add about forty-eight million dollars in property value and, um, a hundred and thirty jobs at that site, additional jobs. Their, uh, TIF request ordinarily by city policy would, uh, go to Ellers. That's the purpose of the resolution is to start that process and, um, start the amendment of the process to amend the boundary. Uh, we need to have that accomplished by September thirtieth in order to capture the increment that's already in the ground. Emmy Roth expects to, uh, uh, complete the manufacturing facility in two thousand twenty-five, so two years from now.
All right, any questions for Gary? So the other thing Gary will do is when we're looking at amending this TIF, he'll look for other items that we might want to include in the project plan. And what is it, a half a mile radius? So we'll be looking at that and then if during this process, any other land, you know, falls into that area, you know, we'll, we'll try to squeeze it in. We get what, four, four amendments?
Four amendments. Most of the land adjacent is outside of city limits, so if there's additions, we'll involve an adding.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Gary, just to be clear with the map, I mean, cause you have a picture, I guess, of the current, if you scroll down a little, the next one. This one.
Next man.
I'm just trying to visualize, so you have the rendering of proposed Emmy Roth that has the offices and then one thing, one of the manufacturing. The next one would go on the back end of that or on the side of it on Williams Drive? I guess I'm trying to visualize where is the next phase on Glacier or is it off of Williams? Yeah, on this one. So is this the, the new, with the new one on the back end or is there one going off to the left? I'm trying to visualize where the new proposed expansion would be.
This is their current, this is what they're currently building here.
Okay.
That looks like what they're currently building. This would be to the north along Williams Drive.
Okay, that's what I was, I didn't know if they just added on to the back end.
I, I don't know that they're.
It shows it on here.
I don't know that they're, they're, they'll be accessing Williams Drive or accessing that building from internally on the site. I haven't looked at the site plan.
Yeah, I think that's on this one and maybe Rodney, have you looked, talked to them about their plan at all?
Yeah, the expansion plan would be to the north as depicted on this one, as I understand it. So I think they, the headquarters has the access points off of Williams Drive. Their operations will primarily be serviced off of Glacier Marine.
Okay. And so for the expansion, they'll just go in through Glacier Marine?
That's my understanding at this point. I don't think we've finalized, uh, review plans for the, the expansion, but that's my general understanding at this point.
Do we know if the, the look of the new place gonna just be more of the, I mean, right now, I'm, on Williams Drive, you have that beautiful new office building and then that. If their expansion all of a sudden just looks like another kind of warehouse thing, that the whole aesthetics kind of goes away of what they just did. So is there a reason why they're going off of Williams as opposed to going off of Glacier Marine is what I'm, I guess I'm getting to?
Yeah, so they bought the land that's depicted on the screen. Uh, we annexed that parcel of land with this expansion anticipated to the north. They may have visions to expand even beyond that, but currently this is the area that they've acquired. And that's their expansion plan would be to the north. Uh, the city Plan Commission, I don't believe has acted on the expansion plans yet at this point, but they've been included in all their, their development, um, scenarios. Uh, Rob Fisher's actually online here tonight and, and hearing the conversation as well.
Yeah, I just, I guess my concern is, is again, Williams Drive is the entrance to the city and we already have that, we, we know the bad NAFA site, I would just love to have Emmy Roth continue with their nice frontage to Williams Drive somehow.
I think, I think what President Hirsch is saying is that whatever goes there, we'd like to see some architecturally substantial features on whatever addition is put on so that the, the presentation moving forward into the city is not that of a, uh, commercial warehouse.
Thank you so eloquently putting words in my mouth, and I appreciate it.
No problem.
Because you don't say it eloquently.
I think a real Guda idea would be to put a, um, like a mural on the side of that building.
Jane has her hand up.
Uh, Alder Person Lagaki?
Thank you. Could I just ask, um, do I have the understanding right that the current Emmy Roth building that's being built is a finishing facility and some office space? And that, um, you know, like the, the packaging, they're not producing cheese? And did I understand Gary Becker right to say that this would be the manufacturing of and new jobs? That they would be producing product here and not just finishing it? Is that the intention of this new building?
I think if Rob Fisher is on the line, he's, um, has more current information about that.
Uh, yes, hello, good evening. Um, so the, the plant with the current project is defined, it's for a finishing facility basically, uh, converting bulk feed from our other facilities into retail and food service. retail and food service packaging. That ultimately leaves the site and goes to our customers. The Caesar Plan potentially include a cheese making facility. The current facility is outlined is for conversion of bulked beef into smaller packages shipped to customers.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So what we're looking at, approving tonight here is really to begin the process with Ellers to explore the TIF amendment opportunity. Is that what we're looking for here, Gary?
This one would be to send the TIF request to Ellers for their review, but then also to begin the process of amending TID number six.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions about that? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you.
I had a question.
Oh, you do?
Gary, well, and maybe the mayor can ask. Usually when we send things to Ellers, it's a shared expense or expense on the developer. How is financially are we doing that on this one? Maybe Dave knows.
Kick that to Dave.
Right now, there is no developer agreement or anything like that for cost sharing with Emmy Roth that I'm aware of. Rodney, are you aware of any?
We have, we have an expense agreement with them, but I don't know if it covers this aspect of it. We'd have to look into that. Obviously, it's a TIF eligible expense, as I would understand it, for the development of this area, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is number seventeen. R-97, Alder Person Schumacher.
R-97 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Ellers and Associates to review tax incremental financing request from STI Holdings Incorporated. So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
Similar to the last one, this is just the initial bit for Ellers to have a review on the application. This one, we did have the agreement in place where the developer is paying that cost for this review.
Anything you want to add, Gary, to this one?
Just that the, there's a couple of different pieces of this development proposal. One is the headquarters for Stoughton Trailers. The other is a mixed use development around that site. That also includes some acreage on the west side of Highway 51. When Ellers is looking at this, they're, we're asking them to see what we can do about not delaying the headquarters facility while we have time to review the mixed use development. So it may end up that there may be two TIF districts or the start of a TIF district that gets expanded over time. So we don't know how that's going to go. We're looking for Ellers input on that. They'll also be beginning the review of the TIF request and coming back and requesting more information from STI. And so at that point, we think, you know, what ideally what we'd like to do is get a TIF district in place so that by next year, that would be effective January 1st, 2024. We have until September 30th of next year to accomplish that, but we have to do it before Stoughton Trailers breaks ground on their headquarters facility. So the formation of the TIF district would probably occur in the spring of next year. And then looking at the second phase, giving time for the mixed use development to go through a review process with the city and the plan commission. There are a number of committees that would be affected. There's a 35 acre park as part of the development and Parks and Rec would be involved in that. Finance would be involved in TIF requests and Plan Commission involved in review of the development.
All right. Thank you. Anything you want to add, Rodney?
Nope. We're certainly trying to accommodate the development schedule as we understand it. I think Gary's outlined the TIF aspect of it well.
And this one is introduced to CARPSY next month, right?
Council authorized submitting the application. That was submitted on Monday and will be having a public hearing, a Capitol Regional Planning Commission in July with action in August on the urban service area amendment for this area.
Okay. So we have multiple things going on here and it's really helpful to have Gary onboard to help facilitate this. Alder Person Schumacher.
In finance, we did request that they use the old form that we had of the TIF application and we requested that they give us at least an amendment on to our new form.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? President Hirsch?
I have a question and maybe Dave or Gary can answer this. When the Ellers looks at their finances and, you know, looking to see if there's a gap, you know, because Stoughton STI is different than Stoughton Trailers, I mean, but it's all under one big parent company. Are they looking at the whole or are they only looking at this new company that's about to be building to look at their fin, I mean, how does it all work? Because that can make a big difference of whether there's a gap.
You bring up very similar questions to what Matt Dragney brought up. Yes, that is one of the things that we anticipate Ellers having to get to that question, whether it's a reasonable amount that STI Holdings is saying that Stoughton Trailers has to buy it for rent or lease it for, that sort of thing. I forget the term that was used the other day, but it was basically going through the financial wringer with some of these questions. Financial strip search is what he said the other day in the meeting. So yeah, they're going to be asking some hard questions. I already saw the initial set of questions coming out from Ellers to both STI Holdings and Emmy Roth. So they're looking at that. They're looking at what types of jobs are going to be added, you know, anticipated pay rates, that sort of thing. So they're looking at a lot of economic issues and doing a deep dive. They've already asked for their financials, most recent financial statements. So they're looking hard.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this topic? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right. Next item is R-90.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Yeah. R-96 of 2023 is a resolution to initiate remedial action steps for the former Department of Public Works site at 515 South Fourth Street. So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Hirsch. I think this is supposed to be R-98 though.
Right. I was going to make a point of clarification or question on whether or not this should be
Because we already had R-96 and on the agenda it does say 98. Candy, can you, do you see that?
Yes, I see it. I'll make that change.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for noticing that as well, DJ, because I was like, I didn't know which one to click on to. All right. Back to Alder Person Schumacher. We have a motion in a second.
This has come through the redevelopment authority already. This is getting out ahead of, as that development there on the riverfront has stalled out a little bit to get working on the remediation of the contaminants within that soil that we should undertake anyway.
And just to be clear, it's only for the Department of Public Works site. It's not the whole site, not the mill fab, not along the river, not, you know.
That's correct.
So we just need to make sure that's only that small portion.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to add, Director Ehlinger? Or I missed this part of the RDA last night. We were finishing up on Plan Commission.
The only other thing to bring up, it was discussed at the RDA as to if we go ahead now with the DPW site first before the Yahar River Development Site, we're going to need more additional fills, so it's more costly. But after a lot of conversation on the issue, both the RDA and Finance Committee are going forward with recommending this. And it's, and this is also just basically saying you can do the work to get the bids. So this is not awarding the bids. It's just preparing the documentation to receive the bids.
All right. Director Sheil, anything you want to add?
Yeah, we're trying to prepare this so that we can actually have the work completed yet this year. The development agreement with Brink has hit some hurdles and the timeline for that is a little less clear. We recommend moving forward with this. The cost of remediation work and tipping fees doesn't seem like that's going to decrease in the future. In the event that the riverfront development or the Brink development accelerates and gets back on track, that may allow us to bring in less fill to fill the areas that we do remove soil as part of this remediation effort.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Takes us to R-99. And this one is coming from Public Safety. Schumacher, you get a rest. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. Resolution 99, 2023, a Class A fermented malt beverage license for Neighborhood Liquor, Inc., Kaldeep Kuar, agent for the premises located at 981 North Page Street, and I'd move for approval.
Sir, a second?
I will second.
Second by Peyton. Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, I can't really comment on this one. I was on vacation and not at that meeting.
All right. Clerk Kristen, do you want to walk us through this one?
These applicants are taking over the, what was the food pantry at 981 North Page Street. The current owner will be surrendering his current license on a date by the end of June and then we will issue the new permit to them. So, or new license, excuse me. So everything's in order and they're set to go.
All right. Thank you. And I think it should be noted that originally we were approached about the possibility of them selling hard liquor there as well. And we told them and we didn't think it was very likely it would be approved. So they, you know, instead went with, with the Class A fermented license. So we saved them some money and some headaches. So, but we just felt you'd want to know that. Any questions or comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next item is also Public Safety, R-100. Alder Person Jensen.
Yes. It's Resolution 100, 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license or special event license for Stoughton Opera House Friends Association for Catfish River Music Festival and I'd move for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Caravella. Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah. Again, I was, I was not there, but I think it's pretty self-evident for what it, what it is, what it is for. It's fundraiser for the Opera House. I think Bill, you're still on there? He may, if he's still there, he can make a comment on it. But they haven't had any issues in the past that I, that's about all I can say.
Mr. Bill, go ahead. The floor is yours.
It's going to be all sunshine and balloons and you should all come down and listen to it.
That's it? That's all you got?
That's the whole pitch, eh? I'd give him a little blurry-eyed, you know?
All right. Anything new this year?
No, it's the same. It's a little shorter than usual because of the fourth falling on a Tuesday. Wasn't really sure if we should have the event on that Monday because will people be at work or will people take off and that kind of stuff. But other than that, I think it's going to be a great weekend. Like I said, sunshine and balloons and good music.
Awesome. Well, thanks to you and the friends for putting it on again. We have questions from Alder Person Reeves.
Bill, I'm remembering the rain last year and I think you mentioned maybe being set up for a tent for music or am I making that all up in case of rain?
Yeah, we looked at different options for what to do in case of rain because we got shut down from a relatively small amount of rain because of the way that the tent over the stage was set up. I think what we're going to do is we have sort of a plan B that's ready to go instead of needing to make one up as we go. And, and if it looks like rain, then we'll, we'll end up closing off the sides of, of the stage before it rains instead of trying to wipe the stage off after it rains. But it'll be, it'll be the setup where it's in front of the gazebo and a tent over that stage. So it'll be very similar to 2019 and also at least one of the days last year.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? Looks like you're good to go, Bill.
Well, thank you.
Yep. And your next item is yours as well. This one's coming from Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
This is R-101, 2023, a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget for Opera House Women's Restroom Expansion. So moved.
I'll second.
Second by Caravella. Alder Person Schumacher.
In finance, we discussed, we had two options, whether to run through transferring some monies out of general fund or potentially using ARBA dollars for it. We eventually leaned on the general fund for expedience in getting Bill's project finished there. This is also one of those that has Bryant Foundation donations in there with some additional monies to come from Friends of Stoughton Opera House and then 10,000 from City of Stoughton. And then they would have their full amount to finish that project in the bathroom.
All right. What else you want to tell us, Bill?
I got nothing much to add except that I think that it would be a very much welcomed improvement to the overall experience of coming to, to the shows. And I, I think that it's an opportunity for us to accomplish that for a relatively small amount of money from the, from the city's general fund. So I think it's, I think we should do it. Well, we're trying to get it done by the time the shows start in September. So that's why we're trying to kind of get this pushed through as quickly as we can.
All right. Any questions? Alder Person Mieski. Did you hear him, Bill?
Just out of curiosity, why did this not go through CIP?
You know, we weren't sure that the project was going to happen at this time last year. It was Bryant, the Bryant Cramp is really what, and their willingness to fund it is what motivated us. And that didn't come about until about two months ago.
Alder Person Reeves.
The only thing to add is I just wanted to say thank you to the Opera House Friends. They have, and I don't have it on the tip of my tongue. I used to when I was on the Opera House Board, but they have raised a lot of money for many, many projects that, you know, the city has not had to pay for. So I just wanted to recognize the hard work they've done to, to fund a lot of important projects for the Opera House. to fund a lot of important projects for the Opera House.
Yeah, I just, you know, I wish I should have had my list with me of all the different things. So it could sound impressive, but it is an impressive list of projects, and it's unusual for us to come and ask for the supplemental funding for those projects. But it's hundreds of thousands of dollars of capital improvements to the theater over the course of the last, I guess, about eight, nine years now.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Bill. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, where are we at here? I'm lost, that's where I'm at. Last item, we have a need to fill a position in District Four. And who's going to lead this discussion? Is that going to be you, Candy, or is it going to be Rick? Or who wants to start this off? I know there's a lot of stuff in the packet. We've been through this process before, but it's been a few years. So you got to take a stab at it, Attorney Mathie.
Sure, just briefly. I mean, basically, you've got a few different options that are laid out in the memo. What it boils down to is whether or not you, as the council, want to appoint somebody to fill this vacancy, or whether or not you want to call an election, or sort of like a blended approach where you appoint somebody and also call an election. With the election process, you can either do a special election where it's a standalone election for just this one district, or if you change the timing of your election, your call for a special election, it would line up with a general elections, whether the spring or the 2024 November election. So basically, you have a few different options before you either, but it boils down to, do you want to have an election for the vacancy, or do you want to appoint somebody?
All right, thank you. And I think somebody helped me in the past. We've normally appointed somebody, haven't we? President Hirsch.
I think we appointed someone, but then we had the special election. I think we did the number two option. So we appointed somebody until the next election, and that person usually ran, and so.
Speaking from experience, yes. Oh.
No, that's how Ben got on.
All right, how did that work out for you, Ben?
I'm still here. Being sure.
Did you think that was a good process, though, Alder Harley?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's, you know, both acknowledging that we need someone doing this work and also allowing public input on who's in the seat as soon as possible.
Okay, and then Candy, can you kind of remind me? I mean, if we go the route where we fill it, do you remember how long we advertised it for? Or how that went? Do you know?
Do not know, because that was a new process. So I would have to do a little more digging and see what was recommended for that. It was like three weeks. Question?
Alder Person Reeves, and then Legaki.
I had a question that I'm, since I've been elected, I don't think has ever come up because we've had great candidates. But, so let's say we got a candidate, or four, and, I mean, do we have to say yes? I mean, is, could we, are we voting as if, you know, the community votes? Or is it, you know, like, you have to choose somebody if you go that route? You have to choose somebody that applies? I'm just curious about that.
No, you still have flexibility moving forward. So you're basically just deciding which process or which avenue you want to start out down. But if you get a few candidates and you decide, well, we actually just want to hold a special election, there's nothing wrong with doing that or having the seat remain vacant. That's really just the biggest downside for, you know, having it remain vacant until an election held is you don't have somebody filling that seat.
I had Alder Person Legaki, and then Jensen.
If I remember right, there were some other writing candidates in addition to Frank? And I don't know if that's true, or is that material available? And have those persons been approached?
We haven't approached anybody yet because we need, you know, direction from you all before we do anything. And as I remember, Frank had gotten in on four votes last year. So I think there were probably others, but it might have been Mickey Mouse or somebody like that. But we can certainly look.
Thank you.
Alder Person Jensen.
I was just going to answer Lisa's question, but she was handled by the attorney. But what we, what we usually did, like this, now he had the rest of this year plus another year. So the, the standard operation that we were doing before was because he had two years, basically, he would be appointed, he or she would be appointed for the remainder of this year, and then would have to run for reelection for the following year. And then again, the next year for a full, a full three years, if that's what they chose to do. That's the route I think we should try and keep. And then to answer the question, if there's three candidates and none of those candidates are qualified, in our eyes, we do not have to choose to, to, you know, we don't have to make that choice. We can, we can ask for more candidates. I have never seen that happen, but, but, you know, it is a possibility. The other thing that we, that we had done recently, last couple of times that this happened, was we also asked for resumes, and that was never done before. But I think it's a good idea. It gives us an idea of who we're, who we're going to be talking to, who we're going to be looking at as a candidate. So, and if my recollection is correct, I believe we had to post it twice in the paper before it was brought, anybody was brought to the council for an interview. I'm not real sure about that, but I think we had to post it twice. But Candy can look that up, I'm sure.
All right.
And Brett, you remember too, there was a time that we had a vacancy in your district.
Yeah.
And we had resumes, and we had people come in and kind of talk to the council, and then the council owed it.
Yeah, that was a, that was a fun process.
Yeah.
All right.
My first time I went through that, too.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I went through it twice on the school board.
I didn't know I was going to be up against an actor, though. I mean, that's--
Do you have a question, Alder Person Caravella? I just saw your mic was on, okay. All right, anybody else have any thoughts or ideas or motions that you want to make on this one?
I'm going to add, considering we haven't had anyone officially on the ballot for District Four, I am just going to give as much notice as I can. I, right now, I don't intend to run next year. So anyone you know in District Four who might be a good candidate, do let them know.
Okay. Yeah, sorry to hear that, but totally understand.
Yeah, life is a little crazy right now.
I bet. All right, Alder Person Peyton.
I, I agree with the process. I think it's good. I don't know how I feel about resumes because we did not necessarily, we ran by campaigning with, to the community, but we didn't present business resumes for this job. And I don't know if that'll deter some people or how that's representative for folks. Like, somebody could put in a, like, it could, theoretically, you can be 18 to serve on the city council, right? So an 18-year-old resume will look vastly different from many of our resumes. So I think that creates maybe an inequity and a discrepancy with candidates. So I would be careful to include that as a requirement. But I do like in the memo, the, like, the questionnaire to get some information, to ask if they've thought about it, and I think that that's good. But for qualifications in that regard, I, I myself am not in favor of doing that. But I could be, you know, in the minority of that.
I don't think we use it as looking at qualifications. We were trying to look more at the personality and how the person was presenting themselves and what, you know, what their background was, and that, and that's basically it. Because, yeah, you're, you're right. I mean, none of us had to go through that when we were up for election. And, you know, it, it's, it's hard to make a decision from this point. Is this person going to be a good Alder Person or not? We used to do it with questions. Those questions were kind of, I don't know, subjective, you know? I didn't really like that process. I don't know, if you got a different idea of how to do it, I think, you know, let's take a look at it.
Director Ehlinger.
Just to comment, typically, the Courier Hub asks for the background of the individuals and puts it in the article, so that's a quasi-resume right there.
And the questionnaire actually asks about the education, training, occupation. And so they can go forever as long as they want, or not answer it?
Resume optional, I suppose, is what we're suggesting.
And I'd like to put a plug out there. The women are dwindling. We need more diversity on this council, so.
You're here.
Well, not that we're really dwindling, but we had five, we're down to three, four.
You make up for it. So what would you like to do? I guess that's, that's the question here. Do you have a few options? I'm hearing most of the talk is about, was it option two? Is that the route you want to go? And how long, how long you think we should post it for?
That might work.
I'd say three weeks. So you can post it and then repost it.
All right, so basically to the end of the month.
Yeah.
And then we can set up interviews in July. All right, so I don't know if we need, we need a motion to that effect, or what should we do here?
Yeah, I think we've, we've got direction on which way the council wants to go. So we could do a motion to post for appointments for three weeks.
So moved. Motion to appoint, yeah, post.
Who's the second?
Second.
Oh, Jensen had the second, okay. So it's a motion by President Hirsch, a second by Alder Person Jensen. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And I think that's all we had for tonight.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Was there a second? Second by Alder Person Reeves. He snooze, he'll lose. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very DJ.
Any opposed?
You get it next time.
Time for Ben to start knocking on doors.